Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our October meeting, the last of three for 2025. It's hard to believe that, you know, after this meeting, we only have two more left as a commission this year. So, uh, this calendar year, not fiscal year. So, let's go ahead and get started. Ponja, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, Tara. Tara here, Tara here, Tara Tyler, it's Shanksen.
You got messed up because of Tyree.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, vouchers and invoices.
Okay, the only concern I had, and I know we've done this in the past, was Raynell's reimbursement. You have to have some kind of receipts or documentation from them for, to substantiate that. I know why we do it, agree with doing it. I just, we just have to treat them like we do the other fire departments. So if you could convey that to the chief and have him submit fifteen thousand dollars worth of reimbursements, that's all we need.
No problem.
Okay, and so I move that we approve them, except for Raynell's pending the receipt of, some receipts.
Second, got a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A motion to approve the payroll for October thirty first.
Second.
Got a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the minutes? Yeah, I did them early.
Second. Got a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Doesn't look like there's any estates of them.
Hold on, just a second. Stand by please, colleagues. Here's some minutes for you to sign.
Yes.
Okay, and estate settlements. Alright, I move that we approve the estate settlements as presented.
Second. Got a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, so I'm excited about this one. First, I want to say two things. One is, I think we all really appreciate the efforts that all of our first responders from the nine-one-one center, police department, fire departments made in responding to the comfort and fire, or quality and fire, the other night. I mean, you guys kept that thing from being a much worse disaster for our community, and we appreciate it. Jane Care too, I know was there, so did I miss anybody? Okay, we have several fire departments there. You know, our law enforcement was helping evacuate. I mean, they were just a really valiant effort and, and that property sustained a lot less damage than it would have otherwise. And I know that, you know, we were all in touch and, and appreciated those efforts. Along those lines, the nine-one-one center director McMullen went above and beyond on October third, when Governor Morrissey and his staff visited Fayette County. They had a really, really busy day that day. There had been another one of those catastrophic wrecks on the turnpike. And the governor and his staff were en route to Fayette County in order to make an announcement about keeping our national parks open during our two most economically important seasons of the year, golly season and Bridge Day, right? So, because of the work of the nine-one-one center, we were able to communicate with the governor's staff not to take the turnpike. And when the turnpike reopened, when they were able to, to get back, like the safest and fastest route for them to get back, which allowed them to travel efficiently and expeditiously, which is important at that level. Further, Director McMullen herself, at my request, with no notice whatsoever, tracked down a wireless hotspot to deliver for the governor's staff to use in order to communicate with the press and particularly the nationwide campaign to announce that our park, our parks were still open in the state. Had she not done that, they would not have been able to do that. They had no connectivity. And, you know, she dropped everything, which was a lot because of the wreck and all the other things going on that day. And that set it up for me, or for them, at my request, to make sure that, you know, they had what they needed. And recognize that the commission has written a letter to you and your staff to thank you for your efforts. And I want to acknowledge the other people on duty that day, Birth of Blanketship, Sarah Vaughn, and Paul Morris. The letter says, this letter is to recognize your important contribution, the important contributions you and your staff made during Governor Morrissey's visit to Fayette County on October third, twenty twenty-five. The governor traveled to Canyon Rim Visitor Center to make an important announcement about keeping the national park open during the county's most economically important events, golly season and Bridge Day. Your work, specifically that of Birth of Blanketship, Sarah Vaughn, and Paul Morris, was critical in facilitating the efficient and safe travel of the governor and his staff to and from Fayette County due to the turnpike closure caused by an accident. Further, the commission recognize your personal efforts to ensure the governor's staff had internet connectivity during his press conference by personally delivering a wireless hotspot to the location with no advance notice. You and the members of the nine-one-one center who were on duty that day were a credit to Fayette County and its citizens. And we really appreciate it. It made us look really good as a, as a county. Here's what we hand her that letter, please. I know you're not big on ceremonies, I didn't wish you too much, but, but we, you guys did a great job and, and we recognized it, and so did his staff.
I would like to say something to, Miss McMullen has been invaluable to me at times when I've had to fall. And I've called you late at night about some things, because I believe you feel as, as what we do, that we work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I know we've got several emergency people in here with the sheriff's department, fire department, EMS and, and things, but no, 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 no different with the nine-one-one center. You're twenty-four hours, seven days a week. And I, and I, and I feel bad at times that I call you late, but you've always been respectful and helpful, and you've done everything you can to solve the issue that we have at hand. And we appreciate you. On behalf of the people of Fayette County, we appreciate you.
Good, good job. I think you were talking to about this position a long time ago when you were sitting there answering phones, so. Let's go ahead. Uh, vehicle transfers, the volunteer fire department, okay.
What?
Tahoe.
Tahoe. Yeah, so, so we currently have, the Fayette County Volunteer Fire Department Training Center has stood up its five oh one C three. And we have an unused vehicle at the nine-one-one center that was previously used by the fire coordinator, who is attached to this volunteer fire department in addition to another fire department in the county. So I'm going to move that we transfer ownership of that vehicle to the Fayette County Volunteer Fire Department for the purposes of, whatever purposes it has.
And what, do you transfer to who?
To the new fire department.
That would be Station eighteen.
Station, yes. Okay, and that's why you would like it to Station eighteen?
Yeah, to Fayette County Volunteer Fire Department, you'll transfer.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got the official names of it, so we can.
Do you have something?
Yes, sir. Hey, we're talking about the red. Yes. And when, when you guys, can I use that for December? That's a park. Oh, here's why. You know, because we pulled that trailer thing, and I got it set up. That's where we're sitting there. I love, and I'll give it back to you soon as I can. But if it's possible, I don't know if you have these for, obviously your needs are before a company, but man, that thing looks great. Pulling my new painted golly and everything around for the kids.
Well, I think we could.
Drive it for you.
We, we, we can transfer and go ahead and do the transfer, and then you guys can talk about that, because it's still, we're still an agency, we're still a guy. Just use of it is not going to be a, a major issue.
Thank you. Ryan was sweating bullets on that one.
Okay, so we didn't finish, did we? No. So I made a motion.
I second it.
Okay, we got a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Okay, Sheriff vehicle purchase.
I'd like to maybe use some of the funds out of the letting to buy our friendly specialist's vehicle. Done some research, found one's last year's state bid, it's twenty-five, held over. There's a couple left at Thornhill. It's Jeep Ranch Cherokee, which would be perfect. And the vehicle should be done now, and it looks way too small. And Park obviously has said that car has had some major mechanical issues over the last few years, so we're dropping more money into it when it's worth fixing it. So I'd like to use some of any money, you know, it's blessing to try to purchase her vehicle.
Can her current one be traded in or anything?
I don't think if you buy off the state bid, you can. I don't think so.
We could auction that.
Yeah, we can sell it. But I think if you're purchasing off the state bid, I don't think you're allowed to do the trade-in option.
Just if we auction, we just need to make sure it goes back into the law enforcement, I believe.
The only thing I would add about if you're going to state bid, because you only had a couple left, if not, approving the buy-off the next state bid, if that ever comes up.
They're going to shut down, so we don't really know when that's going to happen.
Okay.
State's still operating well. We, 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 but what's, sometimes they get very limited. But we've done it once already. We voted to buy, and then it wasn't there by the time we make the move to get it.
But that's, they had two or three left.
Yeah. So I move that we approve the purchase of the vehicle from the law enforcement levy for the sheriff off of this or the next state bid whenever absolutely he's able to find one.
Second. Got a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Aye. And the health department, Terry Harland texted Ruth and me this morning. She did write us a letter about who she, the board voted and would like to, us to appoint. And it is Chris Lawson, Christopher Lawson. I have no objections to that choice. Does anybody else?
I don't.
Okay, so I move that we appoint Christopher Lawson to fill the vacancy at the Fayette County Board of Health, or the Health Department Director and the board's recommendation.
Second. Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have letters and everything to sign?
No, we just got that yesterday evening, so we'll have to do that in the morning.
Under five?
So, Danes PSD needed a new board member. They submitted, I know. Melanie Cadel. There was another James Handshoe that applied. It was arrested, and he dropped his off here. You should have that in there. And that's replacing Lawrence Bowley.
Does anybody know either of these applicants?
Do not.
No, and, and I was talking to Ruth.
Mr. Handshoe's here.
I, I was talking to Ruth that, that generally I, I take care of all these PSDs, but for Danes, who's been running efficiently, I haven't had to go and spend some extra quality time with them, because I've been putting out fires elsewhere.
Well, since Mr. Handshoe is here, do you mind if I ask you a few questions? But that's on your, you're Mr. Handshoe's. Okay. It says you have thirty-eight years of plumbing experience?
Yes, sir.
Wow, and what way?
I worked through the plumbing, pipe, and water, and actually I've been pretty stupid with the end. The last fourteen years I've worked, I worked for Western City Heating and Plumbing out of Charleston. I oversee plumbing and heating on four of the regional jails. Last year with Farmers Hill, Romney, Rogan, and South Bend.
So you just know a little bit about plumbing then? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Ruth PSD, as the hotel supervisor, and my name is, has been running efficiently. Melanie Cadel, he was the operations manager for the last eleven years. Get that money, Phil. We went through an interview process, and the board, their recommendation was Melanie, so.
I would like today to come out, but I filled out an application probably six weeks ago. I learned that Mr. Bowley had missed about five meetings due to his health issues, and I attended their meeting. I believe it's been two weeks ago. And Mr. Mike Hammerick told me that they didn't accept applications. But I came over here last week. I believe it's the last two, yes, last community base. The gentleman across the hall here said, we do have an application if you would like the other. And I filled out another one at that time.
Well, the application here is for the commissioners to look at and, and make sure that we have someone that's not a rotten apple. As, as far as what the PSD does, they're independent, they can do, they have their own process. And want to understand, you guys did a, an interview process on the people that, that were coming in, so.
We don't have an application from Melanie Cadel. Did she submit one?
No, not for us. This is the, I'm assuming for the course. You have what I have.
Can we, can we table this till we go into executive session?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, so.
Okay, we're going to hold on to that till we go to executive session. The next one has to go into executive session also. But we are at nine fifteen, and we need to, John, John, you want to come up and?
Yes.
This is your all's item. In, our letter to the fire marshal was in its final draft, and just had some additional information that we came across that we want to review, see if we need to put anything in it.
Thank you. And John, John, I think it was you, Boomer, and Josh that went through this stuff?
Myself, Josh, and Brandy, yes.
Who's Brandy?
She's the secretary treasurer of the sexual office. Sorry. Jer, or McClellan.
I wondered, I was like, do I have a sibling I don't know about?
That's why I get for sitting beside Jess all morning. But I've, I've attached everything in here for your all's packet. There's a plan of action that myself and Josh wrote up as far as what we would like to see for you all to review. Also in that package is a, is a equipment list from Montgomery and Boomer, which is priority if Smithers shuts down. And then there's also a list of all the equipment and trucks located at the Smithers Fire Department, which the county has purchased throughout the levy cycles. The hearing for the decertification of Smithers Fire Department is set for December third at Morgantown, I think at one thirty. They've asked for myself to be there to represent the association. Josh is off that day, so he will be with me as well.
I will also.
Okay.
Let's CC the fire association on that letter.
Okay, yes.
Yes, I think we, we're, the, the fire marshal's office is asking for a letter from the county commission.
Oh, did it request one? Because we didn't get someone anyway.
Yeah, it has requested one, wants to know.
It's almost finished.
Yeah, wants to know what we feel.
And once we, we're forwarding on to the, so they should have the, the, the letter by the time we're meeting on the phone.
Easy. Hopefully, next couple of days.
Okay, so, John, John, if I understand this correctly, if the Smithers Fire Department gets shut down, Montgomery and Boomer will take some of the, of the items
Yes.
to make sure that they're fully covered. The remaining amount, what will happen with those?
Okay, it's on there as well. It, that will revert back to the new fire station. And right now, with us not having a building or anything, our priority would be to get contact Chief Vernon to see if they needed to use one of those engines, or there's, they have one out of service. That'll be a priority, and we'll work with Chief Vernon on that. And then the other vehicles will revert back to us too, and until we get a building put up, one will be at Fayetteville, one will be at Nuttall, so those will be covered.
All right, and what about all the other equipment that's there?
All the other equipment will revert back to the new center. And then if something happens where we have an equipment failure, or somebody needs something, they can contact Josh or myself, and we can distribute it to those departments in the need.
Okay, and so that we know, the, the new station that we're talking about is Station eighteen, and we need to refer to as Station eighteen, because all of the paperwork has been taken care of for that station. And we're about ready to, to get the final approval to go ahead and start putting, shovel the bud.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate everything.
All right, thank you for your work, John Don, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Oh, two something else?
Well, I, I don't have a question. I was just going to, for the record, for the public record, just kind of outline the things that are in the plan that you guys provided. And that's coordination of the coverage for that area, which is, of course, the most important.
Yes, and Freddie and Mike has, has worked with Tanya right now. Since their closure temporarily, there hasn't been any miscalls or anything. They're, they're still handling everything like they've been doing for the last two years.
Right, and so that's the Montgomery and Boomer fire departments are going to be covering, like they have for quite some time. The transfer and placement of all the apparatus, which you mentioned, equipment, management, and storage, because the new fire department has not yet been built, so we don't have, we have to divide it until we have a place to put it or store it some way. Oversight and inventory control, financial accounts and legal review, funding allocation, or some recommendations about that, and then arranging with Smithers to remove any property should it be closed. So those, those are the components of the plan, which are publicly available if anybody wants a copy.
And we have enough room in our comics boxes down there for the small equipment, everything. Only the bigger trucks will be going to a couple of departments until the building's built.
And then Fayetteville, I believe you guys said it was like six to eight months to get that truck serviced?
If, if it's fixable, yes, but the other night when I talked to John, we really didn't have enough time to talk about that. But I'm sure once he gets something back from the insurance, he'll let you all know the plan.
Well, they've got to, they've got to take the truck to, where, where is it going to? John, John, where's the truck going to? Dakota, South Dakota, Fort Dakota, yeah, to the manufacturers that have it done right. Okay, did, did you write this plan?
Uh, myself and Josh did, yes.
Very impressive. Before we leave the fire department issue, I also want to say thank you to our, our, our special teams, our working teams that work Bridge Day. From what I understand, the, the, the largest injury, the, the most severe injury we had was a broken ankle, am I correct in that?
Yes.
A broken ankle, and it was dealt with, and you know, but appreciate our, our services. I, I just want to say this behalf of Fayette County to you guys that go out there and dedicate that day. I was there at Bridge Day. People love it, but you don't understand how fast those, those people are parachuting, and how fast they're coming in. And that is not an easy thing to do, land on those rocks and land on the river, and you guys were in boats. You were on the shore, you were on the bridge, you were under the bridge. They were everywhere. And thank you for what you did behalf of the fire, the people of Fayette County.
And the police departments were very involved in that too.
At Sheriff's Department, we have state police, we have city officers. It, it's just.
The nine-one-one center.
It looks like we know what we're doing, doesn't it, Tom? But thank you, thank you guys. And tell your, your, your operations, tell your people. Twig, tell your people, thank you. Thank you for what you do. We do appreciate it, and it is recognized.
Thank you all.
Thanks, John John. Okay, Ruth, we have five minutes. Let's go ahead and knock out some of these things. Number seven, establish a new fund.
Yeah, I said that one. With the animal shelter and their new software, they're trying to go cashless for the most part. So we have to have a way of taking payments online, and there's a fund, the state auditor sets aside nine oh five for online payment clearing. You guys at least have to vote to set up a fund, and I've already got the bank account set up for it, so that way we're not putting out bank bank accounts. So that's motion to create fund nine oh five.
Thanks, I moved.
Second, got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Let's skip eight for executive session.
Yep.
We're done, we'll be depending on eight.
Yes, so number ten.
I'll show you one there. So I move that we approve the requests, proposals for the shooting range for the sheriff's department.
Uh, can I, I, we'd like to discuss, I also would like to, to add into that motion that we would be give such special consideration to any company that would employ several Fayette County residents.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I think legally we have to go with the lowest bid.
Well, I, I would like to give.
I don't think, I mean, I think, I mean, I would love to do that, but I don't think we can legally. I think we have to go with the lowest bid.
Anthony, is she correct with that?
I think so.
You have to take the lowest bid?
As long, that conforms with the request.
As long as it conforms to the request.
Well, could the request be for a company to have a majority of their workforce, or live in Fayette County?
Um, I mean, I suppose you could, but then I think you're, you're running the risk of circumventing the process of the rule by basically imposing restrictive conditions on the people who are the companies that want to apply.
Okay, let's, can we move that to discussion while we're in executive session? To get to counsel. Yes, that's it, counsel input, same thing as the woodvile. Okay, all right.
Mr.
Okay, so, funding requests.
Do we have anybody here that's made a funding request?
I'll be on Zoom.
No, is there anybody online?
So, basically.
Hi Ruth, I'm here for Golly Bridge.
Hi Mayor.
Hey.
Mayor Scott, you can go ahead and give us your pitch.
Well, I don't have my paperwork with me, because I haven't, hadn't planned on this today, but anyhow, we put a fund request in for some bleachers to have redone at the football field, so we can properly utilize that field for some other items other than the rodeo we just had. And there was some stuff to redo the, some of the lights and the concession stand. And then one of the last floods we had, which nothing was covered by FEMA, we had a drain plug up, and it actually washed out under the blacktop and started eating the blacktop out on Grant Street. I requested three different people to come in and do estimates on it. I have two estimates. The other guy never did get back with us on the estimates, and I think it was about thirty-two thousand dollars to repave Grant Street. And then there was, I think it was ten thousand dollars or something in there for a, a contract for heating and air conditioning on the town hall building, which houses the Head Start for the heating and air conditioning issues we've been having there.
All right, so that everyone is aware, we're going to look at all of these and then come back at a later time with, with what we've come up with. We're not going to approve anything today. Okay, is there anything else, Paul?
Nah, it's here right now, John.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on there?
There's a few folks that don't have their actual names on there.
They're supposed to have their names on there. Unless they're calling in by phones. So the ten o'clock item is also an executive session item.
Yes.
So I'm going to move at this time that we go into. So I'm going to move at this time that we go into executive session to discuss exhibit A, items five. Six and eight, um, for personnel. Uh, discussions and item ten for legal advice. And should it extend to ten o'clock, also the ten o'clock. Um, West Virginia American Water Golly River PSD discussion.
Okay.
We have second.
Okay, so right now we're going to executive session. All right, good evening and we're, uh, well, still good morning, so.
It looks like evening.
We, uh, just came out of executive session. No decisions were made. We'll deal with these things one by one. Uh, the PSD board appointment. Uh, we did happen to get the application that was filled out by Ms. Cadle. Um, it was dated on ten twenty. After doing some checking and some analyzing of, of both applications. Um, I would like to go ahead and, and make a motion to approve Melanie Cadle as the board replacement. Uh, at Danes PSD.
Uh, a second.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Cadle was the prior operations manager for. A number of years and had been with the PSD for fifteen. Those are her credentials. The board recommended her as well.
Okay. Um, I would like to scratch number six, which was the park physician reorganization because once we. Did some checking, everything was already in place and no, no changes need to be made.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor? Aye. Number eight, the animal control officer budget. What we have is we have multiple accounts with. Our, uh, accountant and our budgetary needs and we have to get processed through the state. We had to move our animal control. To account number seven sixteen.
Oh, he's already there. We're just adding the animal shelter.
Oh, we're adding animal shelter. Okay, thank you very much. Um, so. I'll make the motion to go ahead and, and add.
Cause that's in Ruth's authority. Remember?
Okay, we're scratching that one. Okay.
So move to strike second.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Goodness gracious.
Okay, uh, move that we approve the budget revision.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And I move that we approve the shooting range RFP with the edits.
Second. Motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn, second.
Yes, let me check, let me check. Is it?
Not doing funding today and there was nothing that is aside for West Virginia.
Right, okay, we're good.
Second, all right. We'll have to do the elements for.